Good morning, everybody. Welcome. It is 10:00 AM. This is the special meeting. As I mentioned, visitors authority, March 4th, Friday, April 3rd, 2020. This is your chairman, Bob Lucy. Before we get started, though, however, I am going to, open the meeting and do roll call, I'm going to have Erica Olson take us through a brief board meeting kind of guidelines for today, being that this is a special meeting, the first time we've done this via WebEx. With that, Ms. Olson, will you go through that?
Erica Olson, for the record. Thank you, Chairman Lucy. I'll be helping Corey as well as the chairman facilitate today, just getting used to the new technology. So I'm just going to ask for some specific help with that, so we have a really productive meeting. We're using WebEx on purpose, so we can see clearly who's in the meeting, as well as manage the conversation and the attendance. So, as Corey's mentioned a couple of times, please do mute yourself. If you see your name up in the camera, or your little icon coming up next to your name in the participant panel, that means your audio is not off. Most importantly, particularly for the board members, please, when you want to be recognized, please click the hand raise. So if you haven't done so already, open the participant panel and hover over your name. You'll see a hand icon that appears, and that's how you raise your hand, or ask to be recognized. You also have to unraise your hand. Only Corey and I can see your hand raises, and I'll be announcing that to the chairman as we move through, but you need to unraise your hand if your item has been addressed. The chairman will be doing a roll call type vote, so we won't be needing to raise our hands for voting purposes. And then, public comment, of course, will be addressed by the chair, and we will not be using the chat function today, so please don't use that. As it relates to the material that we're looking at, it will be up on the screen. It is also exactly the board packet that Corey sent out, so there are no additional materials. What you see on the screen is also what was provided in the posting. Mr. Chairman?
Thank you, Ms. Olson. We appreciate that. Without further ado, may I, Madam Clerk, would you do call roll, please?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Mr. Caricelli.
Present.
Mr. Chapman.
Present.
Mr. Kornstein. I'm sorry, Mr. Kornstein, can you say that one more time, please?
Trying to unmute this. Present.
Thank you. Ms. Keel.
Present.
Mr. Lawson. Mr. Lucy. Mayor Shivi. Ms. Silver.
Present.
Mr. Sturbenz.
Present.
Thank you. That's a complete roll call.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. And just for sake of a little bit of organization here, could the executive team, starting with Jennifer Cunningham, please introduce herself today for the members that are on the floor?
Jennifer Cunningham, Executive Vice President.
Robert Chisel, Finance Department.
Esther Isaac, Director of Marketing.
Sorry, sorry, Mike.
It's okay.
Good morning, Mike Larrigetta, Vice President of Sales.
He is Executive Director of Tourism.
Sherry Neal, Human Resource Director.
Thank you, everybody. So, we are going to move on to comments from the floor. This is public comment at this time. We have had the opportunity, and provided the opportunity to the outside public, to submit a comment for our board meeting today. We did receive public comment. One public comment was received from Mr. Jeff Church. That Mr. Church's comments will be added to the record today and put on for minutes. We do not have, I believe, any further public comment at this time this morning. Ms. Carlson, do you have anything?
I have no further public comment. Thank you.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. All right, we are back to item C. This is the approval of the agenda for the April 3rd, 2020 Board of Directors Special Meeting. Do I have a motion from a member, Ms. Olson?
Motion from Mr. Chapman.
Motion.
Mr. Chapman. Second.
Mr. Kornstein.
Second for Mr. Kornstein. We'll go through a roll call vote. All those in favor?
Aye.
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 Any members in the opposition? In the opposition, the motion carries unanimously. We're on to item D. This is the approval of the amendments of the February 27th, 2020 Board of Directors meeting. Are there any items in regards to the minutes that were provided in your packet that would need to be amended or changed at this time on any of the board members? Do we have anybody raising their hand?
We have no motions.
Motion to approve?
All moved.
Motion from Vice Chair Lawson.
Second from Mark Sturbenz.
Second from Mark Sturbenz. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 The opposition? Seeing no opposition, the motion carries unanimously. All right, we are on to item E. This is our first board matter. This is the appointment of an interim president and CEO. With that, we have Ben Kennedy, our legal counsel, on the phone. Mr. Kennedy, will you please take us into this item?
Sure. Thank you, Mr. Chair, Ben Kennedy. For the record, board members, before you have an item to appoint Ms. Cunningham as the interim president/CEO. Alternatively, you can continue the authority of Chairman Lucy and Vice Chair Lawson to continue in that capacity. I'll let them discuss sort of their willingness to do that at this point. If Ms. Cunningham is appointed, we'll also need to define the authority and the position, as well as any potential change in salary. So with that, I will turn it back to the board, to the chair.
Thank you, Mr. Kennedy. At this time, what we will do is take under consideration the appointment of Ms. Jennifer Cunningham as the interim president of the RSEBA until a permanent CEO will be placed, unless there is other direction from the board. So I am going to open this up for discussion for any of the board members. Ms. Olson, if you can cue the first speaker.
At this time, we don't have anyone wanting to be recognized.
This is Ann Silver. I have a question.
Go ahead, Ms. Silver.
Thank you. When we last met, there was some instruction that if there were members of the public, or individuals that were known who wished to apply, they could. I've not, other than contacting attorney Molly Wald, has the board been informed of who may have applied for the CEO position, or interim position?
I can, my question, I guess my answer to you is, as far as we have, no one has actually applied for the interim position of the CEO. We've had brief discussions with individuals. I know most of that, most of those questions were directed to Molly Rezek and Ben Kennedy. It is my understanding that there has been no outside interest in the team.
Chairman Lucy, my other question was, has anyone applied for the CEO position? We were asked to forward, or ask people if they were interested. At least that's in the notes and in my recollection, so I'm wondering.
Ms. Rezek, do you have anybody that, do you have a collection or a list? Has anybody reached out to you, or Mr. Kennedy?
Good morning. This is Molly Rezek, for the record. At this time, we do not have any names of applicants that have applied, that have given permission to have their name be publicly known, so have actually put in an application.
Oh, okay. Thank you very much.
Are there any other questions, Ms. Olson?
Mr. Chair, Ms. Cunningham is asking to be recognized.
Jennifer Cunningham, for the record. Per the meeting, last board meeting, I did provide my resume to our two legal counsel with interest in applying for the CEO position. And I presume that will be further discussed as we finalize a search firm, that discussion on having a search firm. But I have extended my interest in that position, so thank you.
Mr. Chair, Mr. Chapman. And Mr. Caricelli.
Mr. Chapman, please.
Thank you, Andy Chapman, for the record. So just some thoughts. Chairman Lucy, I know that you and Ed Lawson raised your hand a month and a half or so ago, as trying to help lead the organization through a short period of time, and things have certainly changed since that meeting. And I know your schedules are quite impacted, I am sure. So I would certainly look to support the recommendation to bring Jennifer Cunningham on as an interim CEO at this point, and I could do that as a motion if appropriate.
Thank you, Mr. Chapman. We appreciate that. We'll put that on the table.
This is Nat Caricelli. I second that motion.
Okay, so I have a motion and a second. To appoint Ms. Jennifer Cunningham as the interim president of the RSEBA. Prior to, as our legal counsel has pointed out, the appointment of Ms. Kennedy to that role, we'll have to do a second motion, or we can do it in a combined motion, identify her roles and duties in the interim, and tell a permanent CEO will be placed. And I can give a little bit of information about what we've done in years previous. Ms. Cunningham, in the past, has acted as interim CEO previously during the last transition, and we thank her for doing so. At that time, it was authorized to, one, increase her salary based upon what she would be undertaking as the new interim CEO, but also it was, it would identify her day-to-day duties based upon the instruction last time. Ms. Cunningham was given the title of interim managing director, and she was responsible for all the day-to-day issues that require any immediate action as CEO be responsible for. But any major issues outside of day-to-day issues would go to the chair of the board for further discussion, and then be brought to the board as a whole. That was the direction last time Ms. Cunningham was sat in this role. Is any changes to that that the board would like to make? We can have that discussion at this time, prior to taking a vote on her motion.
Mr. Chair, a little hard to hear you. I think your mic's cutting out just a little bit.
Sorry?
That's better.
Can you hear me now?
Yep.
So, Ms. Olson, what parts did you miss on that last?
You got that. You might want to repeat the last couple of sentences, but we heard the rest of it.
Okay, so for the most part, her day-to-day duties, her responsibilities as managing director, or interim CEO, would be identified as every day-to-day duties that would require CEO's authorization. Anything outside, any major decisions outside of day-to-day issues, she would have to consult with the chair of the board, myself, or the board as a whole, or the vice chair. Those issues would be brought to the board in the next regular meeting, or major decisions, or have a special meeting held to conduct those meetings. So with that being said, is there any further discussion, or any changes that any of the board members would like to make to the organization as it was last time Ms. Cunningham was?
Mr. Chair, you're cutting out just a little bit, but we did hear all that. I think if you speak a little louder, we'll be good. And Mr. Kornstein is asking to be recognized.
Mr. Kornstein.
Responsibility, two things. One, the responsibilities that she had, many of them are going to be financially driven. And so, in order to expedite responsiveness, I would suggest that, you know, anything financially and facilities related, could be broader than that, comes to the finance committee, to see if the finance committee can resolve those more promptly than trying to call a board meeting and getting everybody together. And the other thing, in terms of, which I think Ben had mentioned, compensation, I think that we need to look at. I'm sorry?
Are you on mute?
No, I didn't think so. Can you hear me?
We can hear you.
Do you hear what I said before? Because I clicked on it, I thought it was on. Okay. So the only other thing that I would say is, in terms of compensation, I think we have to look at that in the context of the overall financial plan, which we're going to get to. Because while there might have been a salary increase at the last incident, you know, last time when Jennifer took over as interim CEO, we're in a very different environment here, and preserving cash is going to be very important, as we're going to discuss. So I don't know if we can table that till we get to that agenda item. Thanks.
Thank you, Mr. Kornstein. Ms. Olson, I'm going to change really quick. Can you hear me better now? I've changed to a different microphone.
Yes, much better. You're just, the end of your sentence is, we're dropping out, but that's much better. Thank you.
All right. Is there anybody else wishing to speak in regards to this issue at this time? Mr. Kennedy, or Ms. Rezek, do you want to fill in some of these blanks in here in regards to the compensation, as it was posted last time, and how, maybe answer some of Mr. Kornstein's questions? I don't believe that we could take this item out of order with the finance item later in the agenda. I think we'd have to address it now, based upon the way the agenda is drafted. Mr. Kennedy, or Ms. Rezek?
Sure. This is Molly Rezek, for the record. I can address what we have done in the past, as well as what the possible proposal or recommendation could be to recognize the different circumstances that we are in. In the past, the RSEBA Board of Directors have provided an increase in salary to an internal employee, assuming that role. That has been around the 15% to 20% range throughout that. In this case, Ms. Cunningham is not the highest-paid RSEBA employee at this time, but is expected to step into the highest role of the RSEBA, and should be compensated as such. Based upon past practice, a 20% increase would be reasonable. That increase, however, should be given the COVID-19 pandemic, and the fact that there are proposals as a later agenda item, that if you approve that type of increase, that increase would be subject to any further reduction in wages. That is part of the COVID-19 pandemic, and the attempt by staff to propose measures going forward, given the timeframe that we are in. So I think that that would meet both objectives, both putting and providing Ms. Cunningham with an overall increase, as well as have that increase be subject to any pay cut. If you do so, overall, she will be, from her current salary as executive vice president, she would still be taking an overall pay cut, even if you do the math with respect to that.
Thank you, Ms. Rezek.
Mr. Ken, and then Ms. Cunningham is also asking to be recognized.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, Ben Kennedy, for the record. To answer the procedural question, I believe we could table the decision on salary to include it in the later agenda item, if the board wanted to do that. And then, as far as Mr. Kornstein's point of directing Ms. Cunningham to refer financial issues to the finance committee, as it's currently established, the finance, and it's a later agenda item, the finance committee is still advisory to the board. So anything that went to the finance committee would need to go to the board for final approval. Also, if we're giving, just want to note this, if we're giving Ms. Cunningham direction to take issues to the finance committee as a whole, that would require noticing and holding a finance committee meeting, which may sort of defeat the purpose of identifying one individual that she can come to to discuss issues, to determine whether it's something that's either within her authority, or something that would need to be escalated up to the appropriate board level. If there's any questions, that's all I have.
Thank you, Mr. Kennedy. Ms. Cunningham?
Thank you. Here in our presentation, just so the board knows, we are recommending a 25% pay cut for executive staff.
Thank you, Ms. Cunningham. Okay, so I currently have a motion on the floor to appoint Ms. Jennifer Cunningham as the interim CEO Managing Director of the RSEBA. Her duties will be, as such, laid out, keeping maintaining day-to-day same duties as the CEO, and oversee. Any outside of, any outside duties would be escalated to the board through the chairman. And there would be a potential discussion of increase of pay, but we could address that in a later board item, if that is the, if that's the acceptable by the board. So, Mr. Chapman, is that an acceptable motion to you for, at this point?
Mr. Chapman's asking to be recognized.
Mr. Chapman.
It looks like you're on mute.
Sorry about that. Yes, I do agree with that motion.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Chapman. And then, I believe my second was from Mr. Caricelli. Mr. Caricelli, do you approve of that motion?
Yes, I do.
Thank you, Mr. Caricelli. So I have a motion and a second on the floor. All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Anyone in the opposition? Seeing none in the opposition, we, the motion carries unanimously. Congratulations, Ms. Cunningham. Thank you for taking the, stepping up to take on this role at this time. It's a very trying time, amidst the crisis that we're all dealing with, so we appreciate you willing to step up. All right. With that, we are going to move on to item E2. This is the selection of a search firm and procedure for hiring the president/CEO. So, I want to take a second to have a brief discussion in regards to this. There has been a number of discussions, I think, ongoing since our last meeting, in regards to how we would move forward with the selection process of the CEO. We felt it prudent that to hire a outside firm would be the best course of action, potentially for the selection process of finding a permanent CEO president. The, we did not receive, as pointed out to Ms. Silver earlier in the meeting, have not received in the applications outside of Mrs. Cunningham's for the permanent president and CEO position. And we have done this in the past, where we had allowed everybody to apply, but we wanted to make sure that we consulted adequately the outside potential market, that this position was open, from the direction of some of our board members, that we needed to go outside and find, and put this out to a national search. So we have done that. And with that, I will going to turn this over to Mr. Kornstein, who has been able to help me in regards to identifying a search firm that we have talked to. And Mr. Kornstein can give a little bit more detail in regards to Searchwide and Mr. Gamble at Searchwide. Mr. Kornstein?
Thank you. Can you, can you hear me now? I think I'm off mute.
We can hear you.
Perfect, thanks. So, after the last board meeting, I reached out to the people that run the meeting business, the convention business at Caesars Entertainment, and first asked if the person that heads the group thought there might be a candidate that could fill this role, of which there was no candidate that was recommended. I secondly asked about the search firm, and that would be recommended, since this is new to me. I mean, we could hire one of the national firms, but this is a very specialized business. There's something in the order of 100 people that actually work as CEOs of these CVBs, and it was important in my mind to get a firm more specialized in this area. So I was given Mike Gamble's name. The name of his firm is Searchwide Global. The deck is in the board package. I don't plan to go through a lot of detail, but to the extent I can answer questions, I'd be happy to do that. The founder, Mike Gamble, has actually worked as the CEO of a more-than-one CBB, and he has assembled a group of people that have similar backgrounds. And they have a very, I think, impressive list of placements that they have made in recent times. You'll see some of the names, you know, there, including San Diego and other, you know, prominent places. Another person who would be involved in this process would be, you know, has also significant experience, actually was in charge of Washington DC. It's Bill Handberry. We just flipped by that. Bill Handberry. And he ran the Washington DC CBB post 9/11. He's had a lot of other experiences, and he would be probably more of a point person initially. And I'm impressed by the firm. I'm impressed by their background. And I think that the idea of hiring them with their expertise, I think we're going to learn a lot about how we're organized, how we might want to think about being organized, coming out of this crisis, which is going to be a big challenge for everybody that's in this business. And the terms of the arrangement are basically $25,000 for the initial retainer. There would be another $25,000 payment, 30%. There would be another $25,000 payment thirty days later, but I'm planning, if we give an approval, to get that stretched out, as given my concern expressed several times about husbanding as much cash as we possibly can. And then there's a typical thirty percent fee paid with credits for anything paid prior to first year, you know, salary of the new, new person. There's a question, I think, that's very appropriate to ask, is now a good time to hire a firm? Are people going to be looking to really move? Or are we just wasting our time and wasting our money? And I would answer that in a couple of ways. Number one, I think we're going to learn a lot by having Bill and Mike very involved in this process. So I think the education we're going to get is very strong. Number two, I understand that there are certain, a very limited number of people that have significant experience that are currently out of work. And number three, importantly, if we can put our best foot forward, I believe there will be people that are pretty nervous about what's going to happen in their communities that are currently employed. And depending on the duration of their contract, might be very happy with a multiple-year contract in a new environment, a new opportunity where they could really make their mark, that we might actually get a better candidate than we might otherwise be able to attract. I would say that, you know, this firm has had experience working for RSCBA in the past. I think it was in 2011. I wouldn't say it was the greatest experience that they've had in their professional careers. And so one of the issues that we're going to, I hope, address is that, in the last instance, when they had this involvement, there were many people of different backgrounds, let's say, different roles, board, non-board, that inserted themselves into the process. It became quite a difficult, complicated process, and I think that's being polite. They were very reluctant to even move forward with this. You know, Chairman Lucy and Ed Lawson are both familiar. I updated them numerous times, as well as Ben Kennedy. And in the context of finally getting their approval to put forward this proposal, we're going to need to work with them, like most businesses would work with a professional firm. And because of the public meeting law, it makes it a little bit more, you know, challenging. So one of the topics that I'm happy, you know, to discuss is we're going to have to delegate significant authority for them to canvass the universe of candidates, skinny it down to a smaller group, interview the people, and come back to us, preferably with the one highest-rated candidate that wants to move forward. Because, you know, people are going to be quite nervous in this environment, especially if they have a job and they're in a competitive process to put their name forward because of fear that it could make them more vulnerable where they are currently working. So with that, I would say, those are my overview comments. Happy to answer any questions, or I'm sure Chairman Lucy will be happy to answer questions as well.
Thank you, Mr. Kornstein. I appreciate the context that you've been able to provide. Mr. Kornstein took this project on. A request of mine, me as well. When we initially, at the outset of our last board meeting, Searchwide was a name that was provided to me outside of Mr. Kornstein. And when it came to me with his contact, I had asked him to establish a proposal and have them reach out to us. And I was also very happy with the ability that these individuals brought to the table in regards to, this is a very unique crisis that we're sitting in right now that we have never seen before at the RSCBA or in our region or within our state. We're going to need some extreme leadership to carry us through this type of
Call him back.
process on the outset. And I think with Searchwide's ability to scan and scour nationwide to find the best candidate, I think that's going to be a benefit to the RSCBA as a whole. But as a second part of that package, to have Mr. Handberry from Searchwide participate and also do some structure and foundational structure for the new CEO of the organization as a whole, based upon his experience as the CBB in New York, or I'm seeing with CBB in Washington DC post 9/11, it is a tremendous amount of information and institutional knowledge that will help bring us out of what I believe is going to be the toughest climb for the RSCBA in recent history for us. So with that being said, are there any questions in regards to the contract or the process? Now, this item that we're looking at is just to talk about hiring and initiating a contract with Searchwide for the recruitment of CEO candidates. Is there any discussion at this time, Ms. Olson? Do we have anybody?
Ms. Keel?
Keel, the floor is yours.
Hi, this is Shannon Keel. Can you hear me?
Yes, go ahead.
So is the 25,000, I guess we are recalling it a retainer. Is that, that's in addition to the commission? And if so, is the 25,000, because we're, it's being suggested to use that, them as a consultant, if you will, on organization and structure within the RSCBA?
That is my belief, that that is the, that is the construct of the current contract and what they're, in their proposal. Maybe Mr. Kornstein could provide you a little bit more clarity. Don, do you have any more clarity on that?
Yeah, um, yeah, I'm off mute. So Shannon, I, it's my understanding, and I'll clarify it, the 25,000 is kind of earnest money to get started. They're going to spend time, and they want to make sure we're committed, as opposed to, you know, starting to work having no money. My understanding is that 25,000 will be credited, as I had referenced before. I think it's going to be credited against the commission, and I'll verify it. And then the second 25,000, which they're asking for thirty days later, I think under normal circumstances, I would understand that, because they could, they would be traveling a lot, they'd have more expense. But given the world we're living in, at least in the current time, I'm going to ask them to stretch that payment out. I'm not sure that I'll be successful. I think I will be. But that would be my goal, is to stretch the second 25,000 payment, which would also be a credited amount.
This is Shannon Keel. Sorry. This is Shannon Keel, and in my experience with, with recruiting firms, there is a percentage of commission of salary, as I'm sure we're all used to. Thirty percent, in my opinion, is a little high, a little high from what I've seen. Others can certainly weigh in. But again, I'm not personally used to, that's great to hear that the 25,000 will go back against the thirty percent and we'll get clarification on that. I'm not used to having to pay an additional amount of money for travel or whatever else there is to find a CEO. So again, I just would like to get clarification that the 25,000 is going, is because they are going to be doing additional duties, consulting for RSCBA outside of just trying to recruit and find someone. And maybe those duties, those additional consulting duties should be outlined for the board, so we can see what that 25,000 is going to.
Mr. Chair, Mr. Caricelli?
Mr. Caricelli?
Right here, thank you. I guess it's my understanding that we're not going out for a national RFQ, which has been the normal process for executive searches in the past with the RSCBA and other boards. And unless, if we don't do that, I cannot support this at all. I will never support going directly to one company to spend a hundred thousand or more of the RSCBA's money. So I cannot, will not agree to, to, to agree to going to this. I'm sure they're a great company, but I just cannot agree to more than I vote yes on this motion if we don't go through the process.
This is Ann Silver, and I'm sorry, I'm by phone, Mr. Chair. My question was along the lines of Mr. Caricelli. I don't have any objection to this firm, per se. I wondered, from a legal perspective, or even media perspective, or optics-wise, do we need to do or go through a process of selecting a search firm? I don't doubt any of their qualifications or anything Don has indicated about their capabilities. But are we in any way obligated to, to go out on a bid for a search firm? Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Silver. To answer both Mr. Caricelli's, to his statement and to your question, Ms. Silver, and Mr. Caricelli is absolutely correct that in our press process, we did utilize an RFQ process that the board set forth to open an RFQ for search firms to submit to. It was a sixty-day process that we went through last time to adhere to different companies for the CEO process, and then that selection was made. The decision to do that obviously added quite a bit of time to the already long duration of placing the CEO. So that was one of the reasons why we elected maybe not to do that this time, and that was a decision on my behalf. However, this is why the board is discussing this today in regards to this. This is an opportunity we feel we wanted to bring to the board for discussion. There aren't very many companies out there that have the ability to do this type of work and place these. Now, there are many headhunter and search firms out there. Our industry-specific ones are very few. And we have reached out to a couple of those. Some of those were not willing even to bid, even if there was an RFQ, did not want to submit a proposal to us. So we, we just thought, we felt it was prudent to bring forward the only RFP, or the only proposal that we have seen at this time. So that was the discussion. Now, Mr. Kennedy, if you can, please provide us with the legality of just bringing forward a proposal without an RFQ.
Sure, thank you, Mr. Chair. Ben Kennedy for the record. So under the Purchasing Act, a search firm would be considered a professional service, which is exempt from competitive bidding requirements. So while you're always free to publish an RFQ, to receive titles, to allow you to sort of evaluate a number of companies, when you're dealing with professional services, you're not required to go through that process. So if the board decided they wanted to move forward with Searchwide today, they would be entitled to do that. That'd be permissible.
Thank you, Mr. Kennedy. Are there any other comments or discussions, Ms. Olson? Do we have anybody?
Mr. Chapman, and before Mr. Chapman speaks, if the mayor is on, if you could please just announce yourself, so we can identify you in our list. That would be really helpful. Okay, Corey, I think that is your answer. Mr. Chair, Mr. Chapman?
Mr. Chapman, the floor is yours.
Thank you. For the record, Andy Chapman. So one question that I'm thinking about, given the current situation that we are all dealing with, and certainly the RSCBA has deep been to, where, you know, really pretty much all activity is on hold and will be for a period of time. I'm just wondering if it would make sense to extend this conversation by another thirty days to see if there, and it sounds like there's been some due diligence already, already on Don's behalf, as well as Chairman Lucy's, in, in the wider net. But given the fact that, you know, we just put Jennifer in as an interim, do we have some time to consider, would there be additional firms or additional opportunity to look at how we could bring somebody in? As of right now, it's going to be, you know, not a lot of activity happening and really more cost containment more than anything else. So just a thought that I would throw out there.
Mr. Chapman? Olson, are there any other comments from the board members?
There are not.
Mr. Lawson, I'm going to call on you, actually going to call you out on this. The vice chairman had head up the committee last time in regards to the executive search firms and how the RFQ process went. Maybe you could elaborate to the board in regards to some of the other potentials that are out there or landmines that you may see.
Well, I'm, I'm kind of leaning towards Nat, just for the optics of the whole thing, is what Nat is saying, you know, doing the RFQ. I also agree with Andy that, you know, we do have some time. I know an RFQ is going to take thirty to sixty days to get it out and responded to. So the question is, are we willing to wait sixty days, basically, to start a search? And then we're probably a three to five-month process after that. So we're well into the first of the year by that point. So I just asked that question to the board, is, are you willing to go out with an RFQ and not really have a CEO in place until, you know, January of 2021?
Chair Lawson, Mr. Caricelli, then Mr. Sturbens, and Mr. Kornstein?
Mr. Caricelli?
We did it last time, and I think I would be more than willing to do it this time, because at the end of the day, we will assume what's out there in regards to, to the prices, price we're going to pay for a search firm, et cetera, et cetera. So I have no problem with an additional few months.
Thank you, Mr. Caricelli. Mr. Chapman?
And Mr. Sturbens, and then Mr. Kornstein?
No comment at this time. Mr. Lucy?
Okay, Mr. Sturbens? Mark, can you hear? Mark Sturbens, can you hear this?
Can you hear me? So yeah, no, I was just saying, I agree with Nat. I think it's important to follow the precedents that have been set on prior searches. But with that being said, you already have a bid from the existing firm. We could go ahead and, couldn't we go ahead and extend an RFQ on a shorter timeframe, with them already having submitted their bid, and then thirty to forty-five, maybe sixty days at the most, go ahead and make a decision at that time. That would be my recommendation. Thank you.
All right, Mr. Kornstein?
Thank you. You know, I hear that there are past practices. But in your past practices, you haven't faced a crisis like the crisis that our country is facing and our organization is clearly facing. And the idea that, you know, one would think that, you know, and I respect what Mark just said, I'm guessing if we don't hire this firm, and I'm not making, this is not like a threat, I'm just telling you my judgment. This took a lot of arm twisting to get them to come to this point. I think they're going to withdraw. I don't think you can assume they're going to sit still for forty-five or sixty days or ninety days and wait. Our, our community or our organization has a very, very mixed reputation in the industry. I'm not going to say anymore. I don't think it's important. I've shared some of the feedback that I've gotten, both with Bob and Ed. And I just think we have to understand the environment we're in. And the idea that we, by the way, might be very close to burning almost all of the cash we're going to have when we get back to the other part of the agenda, we're not going to be able to attract anybody that's, that's going to be very talented. They're going to see that we're operating on fumes, and I think we're working ourselves into a corner that's going to make the search almost impossible. So those are my comments. If it were up to me, I think we have to move quickly now, while we still have a story to tell and there's hope around the corner, as opposed to reality striking, when people are going to see at the cash burn rate we're at, they're not going to have much of a runway to make much change.
Mr. Chair, just wanted to recognize that the mayor is on. She just is unable to speak, so just for the board's purposes. And Ms. Keel is seeking to be recognized.
Ms. Keel?
Shannon Keel, I, my recommendation would be to have us do an RFQ and vote at the next board meeting in thirty days. So I do not go thirty days, and then another thirty days have to wait to make the So I do not go 30 days and then another 30 days have to wait to make the vote. I would do an RFQ and I would explain to the company that, based on public perception, that it is very important that we do have a formal RFQ, but that they are, you know, the front runner and we will act swiftly. And at the next meeting in 30 days, we will make a decision. And I would also recommend that the RFQ stipulate whether or not we are searching for a company to provide services solely for finding a CEO or if it's also to include services for consulting for the RSCVA with organization and, and things of those matters.
Thank you, Ms. Keel. Ms. Olson, you said the Mayor Sheevy is on the phone now. Is she, is she need, is there, she requesting to be heard? Is there something?
Yeah, okay. We can't tell who, who the mayor is. So Ms. Sheevy, if you can unmute yourself and be recognized, that would be great.
Give us just a second to unmute the college users so we can identify her. Thank you.
Can you hear me? Yes. Hello? Okay. Thank you. Okay, thanks so much.
Okay, so welcome, Mayor Sheevy. Based upon the discussion from the board, is there a motion? Would somebody wanna make a motion in this, at this time in regards to pursuing the CEO search firm?
I'll make the motion.
A motion from Mr. Kornstein to pursue the contract with Searchwide Global for a CEO search firm.
I'll second, I'll second.
Who seconded? I'm sorry.
I did. Hillary.
Oh, Mayor Sheevy. Mayor Sheevy is my sec, Don Kornstein, I have a motion from Don Kornstein, a second from Mayor Sheevy. I'm gonna call for a roll call vote. So Ms. Olson, will you call each member of the board out for their vote, please?
I'm gonna ask Ms. Carlson to do that, if that's okay, for her records.
Thank you. Mr. Caricelli.
This motion being that we should, that we should hire the search firm that's listed in the agenda?
Yes.
I vote no.
Mr. Chapman.
Oh.
Mr. Kornstein. Ms. Keel.
Um, I would say no. What are we allowed to make in a second motion?
You can change the motion if this one fails.
I would say no.
Mr. Lawson.
No.
Mr. Lucy.
Yes.
Ms. Sheevy.
Yes.
Ms. Silver.
Yes.
Mr. Sturbens. Let's see if we can get you up. Apologize.
Amy?
Mr. Sturbens, yes, I'm sorry. Could you please repeat that?
Uh, no.
Hey, Madam Clerk, will you read, will you turn on the vote, please?
Yes, we have four nos. We have four yeses, one, two, three, four, five nos.
The motion fails this time. So Ms. Keel, you had mentioned a second motion. Do you have a motion you would like to offer at this time?
Yes, I would like to make a motion to go out with an official RFQ and with the, to make a vote on the selection of said company in 30 days, which I would assume would be then at our next board meeting. I, I do not want it to go any farther than 30 days.
Okay. The new motion by Ms. Keel is to open up a RFP process, RFQ process, for a search firm to be considered in 30 days at the next regular board meeting of the RSCVA. Or, Ms. Keel, that next board meeting will may occur quicker than 30 days. If you wanna do it at the next board meeting or after, because the 30 days would be, it would expire after our next regular board meeting.
This is Shannon Keel, 30 days or less. So if that, if it's less than that at the next board meeting, that is sufficient.
Okay, so by the next board meeting would be a recommendation or a consideration by the board. That is the motion currently that I, as I understand it. Is there a second for that motion?
Mr. Chair, Mr. Caricelli, and then Mr. Kornstein seek to be recognized.
I second the motion. This is Mr. Caricelli.
Okay, I have a motion and a second. Further discussion, Mr. Kornstein.
Yeah, I'm just curious, you know, since I spent the time cultivating, you know, this other situation, not asking for any acknowledgement, who's gonna actually go out and organize this? Given the circumstance, it would seem pretty, you know, strange to me, management would organize this process. So I'm wondering who on the board is gonna volunteer their time to find the search firms that are capable of doing this search and getting those proposals to be put forward in front of the board in less than 30 days. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Kornstein. One of the discussions that we have for a little bit more iteration in regards to previous, we did create a subcommittee last time to oversee the RFQ process and bring forward that to the board. As I pointed out, Mr. Lawson was the head of that board last time. However, those things, we're probably looking for a new direction. And I think that's important, that we identify who the board member would be. I agree with you that it should not fall with staff, meaning that this would be the individual that would be ahead of the organization. Are there any further discussions to, to talk about that motion?
Mr. Chair, Mr. Sturbens' hand has been up for a while, so I'm not sure.
Mr. Sturbens, Mark, do you have, Mark, do you have something you'd like to add?
No, I just, I had a question on the original proposal. Yeah, motion, excuse me.
Do you have that? Do you have a question still, or are you?
No, no, it was answered. Thank you.
Okay.
Mr. Chair, Mr. Kennedy.
Mr. Kennedy.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, Ben Kennedy, for the record. Maybe, I'm not sure who's the person to answer this. I think last time we, you know, staff handled putting the RFQ together and distributing it. And then that committee, I think, served to review the responses and make recommendations to the board. But as far as the mechanics of getting an RFQ put together and getting it circulated in the sort of industry and trade, I, I think staff did that last time. But maybe somebody can, that's, to that or speak to that.
Well, Miss Cunningham, you would have been the only staff member with the organization in that role or in that, in the executive role when that, we did this last time. Do you wanna add some information about our context?
Staff did handle it in conjunction with Molly Rezak. And we submitted the RFP 30 days, maybe a little ambitious because of the advertising requirements and time for response, but I think we could do our best. And yeah, that would be something Mr. Chisel would do out of the finance office. So we are able to do, that's how we handled it last time.
Thank you, Ms. Cunningham. Appreciate the context. So based upon Miss Cunningham's discussion, this was handled at the staff level with our attorneys. If there's any opposition to that, we can move forward with taking a vote on the motion. I do agree, though, with Ms. Cunningham that the timeframe to try to highest individuals to apply for that role will be very challenging. And I think 30 days is ambitious. I think more than likely, you're going to, it will be 60 days, which will put us well into June before we'd be able to even select a firm, in my opinion. But that is still the consideration, the consideration of the board based upon the motion as said at this time. So there is a motion and a second, so I will have to call for the vote. With the context, yes.
To Mr. Chapman and Ms. Keel.
Okay, Mr. Chapman, the floor is yours.
Thank you for the record, Andy Chapman. I was just gonna volunteer if we need to have a board member or two sit and work with both staff and others. I would be happy to volunteer for that.
Thank you, Mr. Chapman. I appreciate that. And you said Mr. Kornstein or?
Ms. Keel and Mr. Chisel.
Okay, Ms. Keel, the floor is yours.
Sorry, Ms. Keel here. I put my hand down, but I'll just make a comment anyways. I think there are plenty of companies that are, would love to have business right now. And I, if it's gonna go past 30 days, if it's, I will, I cannot support the search and I would rather just hire this company now if you think that it's gonna go past 30 days. But I guess my motion would still, still stand technically.
Thank you, Ms. Keel. Um, Mr. Chisel.
Robert Chisel, for the record, just wanted to make sure it was clarified that staff can put out a bid. We would advertise. We can do it in a shortened timeframe, but it would still take probably a week to 10 days to get the advertise out and get responses. But we would need direction on the bid requirements and what the board is looking for as far as the search firm. And we would also need the board to identify what requirements they're looking for as selecting the, the proposed bidder, I should say.
Mr. Chair, Mr. Kornstein.
Mr. Kornstein, floor is yours.
We're still on mute.
I've never had a, where management was integral, let alone run the process, to find a new CEO. That's the responsibility of a board. The board's primary responsibility is to find a CEO and oversee the CEO. We're not involved with day-to-day operations and the management structure that the CEO wants to implement to maximize the value of the organization. So for whatever it's worth, I'm very uncomfortable with that. And the idea that we're gonna advertise for a job like this is gonna make us look like we're fourth rate, not even third rate.
Mr. Chair, Mr. Chapman.
Mr. Chapman, floor is yours.
For the record, Andy Chapman, I just wanna make sure I'm understanding. I think what we're talking about, Mr. Kornstein's, we're not talking about hiring a CEO through this process. We're talking about hiring a search firm in this process. And if within 30 days, we can have another firm that might be interested in, in participating in this process with us, along with Searchwide, which I don't have anything against Searchwide. I've worked with them in the past. They're a solid firm. But I think that we could take the steps just to make sure that there are other interested parties. So we're not hiring a CEO in the next 30 days nor advertising for one, but we're doing a search firm. So just wanted to clarify that for the board and for myself.
Mr. Chair, Ed Lawson.
Go ahead, Ed.
So I wanna volunteer also to help Mr. Chapman on this. And, and I'm gonna note, you know, Mr. objections. But I think that we, if we could have maybe one more board member to help in this process, I think that would be sufficient.
Mr. Chair, Ms. Keel, Mr. Kennedy.
This is Shannon Keel. I will assist as well in the selection for the RFQ, for the search firm.
Okay, so I have Mr. Chapman, Mr. Lawson, and Ms. Keel that have volunteered to help that any search firm capacity and provide direction to the staff in regards to posting the RFP. For some edification of the board, as I look at the calendar, 30 days currently would place us into May, which would be May 3rd, obviously, being the third days. Our next regular scheduled board meeting is for the 23rd of this month, which would be 20 days. Based upon the motion that has been offered at this time, we would have to have a special board meeting somewhere in and around May 3rd or the week after to consider firms and move forward with a firm. Ms. Keel, would that be acceptable for you in regards to your motion to, to approach that from that standpoint?
Sorry, just to clarify, did you say the next, the vote would be at the end of this month or on May 3rd?
If you were, if we were to pass your motion based upon 30 days for a 30-day RFQ process, allowing for 30 days for people to apply, I wouldn't set it out to May 3rd, which would be that closed date that RFP would be May 3rd. Then we would have to conduct a special board meeting sometime there or after, within a period of time shortly thereafter, to consider the firms that have submitted the applications for the process. Would that be acceptable for you? Because our regular scheduled board meeting would occur later this month on the 25th. It would be 20 days within, so would not, we would not be able to cover it at the next board meeting.
So is there not, could you not move the next regularly scheduled meeting to the 30th?
We could push it out two weeks.
One week.
It would have to be two, because we'd have to go post the 3rd of May.
No, no, I'm saying if, if, if we push, if we push our next scheduled meeting to the 30th, as opposed to the 23rd, that would then give us almost four weeks to do a proper, to do a proper search as opposed to trying to pigeonhole us into 20 days. In addition, then we would not also have to schedule or call another board meeting. We could just have the vote be at our next scheduled meeting, but just move it to the 30th.
Yeah, I'd be, I'd be okay with that. We could do that. So, all right, so moving along, we have a, we have a motion on the floor currently to open a RFP process for 30 days, potentially to be considered on the next regular board meeting to occur on April 30th of this month, to be, to consider any potential other outside firms that would be willing to participate in a CEO presidency, a search for the RSCVA is the current motion, as I understand it. Mr. Caricelli has seconded that motion. Are there any further discussion, Mrs. Olson? Has anybody raised their hand?
Mr. Kennedy.
Mr. Kennedy.
Yeah, Mr. Chair, I wanna be careful here. So we've had three board members volunteer to work with staff through the RFQ process. And I'm afraid that creates a committee, which we aren't stylized to do and which would require sort of any interaction to take place in an open meeting. I think the, I would suggest a more appropriate way would be to designate one board member to the extent staff has questions in preparing and issuing the RFPs that they can be directed to talk to. And then once staff gets all the RFQ responses back, at that point, those responses would go to the full board at that meeting on the 3rd.
Okay. So would be my recommendation that Mr. Chapman remain as that liaison to the board through the process to RFPs, if that's, if that's acceptable to the board. Ms. Olson, is there anybody wishing to speak?
There is not.
Okay, so I have a motion on the floor. Ms. Keel, I'm gonna restate this one last time, just, just for some clarification. Motion is for the board to open up the RFP process for search for search firm for the CEO for the period until April 30th. That can be considered by, at the next regular board meeting by the board and that Mr. Chapman would act as a liaison to the board for this process. Is that acceptable in your, in your frame of emotion?
This is Shannon Keel, yes it is.
Okay, Mr. Caricelli, are you acceptable with that as a secondor?
It is acceptable to me also.
Okay, so I have a motion and a second. Ms. Carlson, do you understand the motion as I, I read it out?
I do, thank you.
Okay, I'm gonna call for the vote, all those in favor, I'm, well, I'm sorry, Ms. Carlson, will you call a roll call vote, please?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Caricelli is a yay.
Yay.
Second, Mr. Chapman.
Yes.
Mr. Kornstein.
No.
Ms. Keel.
Yes.
Mr. Lawson.
Yes.
Mr. Lucy.
No.
Ms. Shivi. Mayor Shivi. Okay.
Muted, it looks like.
Okay. Ms. Silver. Ms. Silver. Mr. Sturbens. Mr. Sturbens, do we have a vote for Mr. Sturbens?
Mr. Sturbens, you're also muted.
Mr. Sturbens. There we go.
Yes.
Thank you.
Yes.
May I call again for Mayor Shivi? And Ms. Silver. Ms. Silver and Ms. Mayor Shivi, may I have a vote, please?
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Can you hear me? Now you can hear me, okay. Um, I, because I keep unmuting and it's, and you still can't hear me. Can you repeat the motion, Chairman?
Search firms to submit bids to the, to RSCBA for the search, search process. And Andy Chapman would act as a liaison to the board to help facilitate that process.
Can you hear me? Can you hear me now? Yeah, no.
That was a nay from Mayor Shivi.
We're missing a vote from now from Ann Silver.
Missing a vote from Ann Silver. Ms. Silver.
On the conference call.
Silver.
Yes.
I'm sorry, can you give us your vote, please?
Yes, yes.
Okay, we have
Madam Clerk, will you please tally the votes and, and please offer a vote count?
Yes, for the record, we have six yes, I'm sorry, we have six yeses and three nos.
Thank you, Madam Clerk, the motion carries allowing the search RFP process to open up with Mr. Chapman being the liaison to the board. Okay, with that, we are on to the next item. On my agenda here. We are on to E3. All right, this is the delegation of the Finance and Facilities Committee. This is a discussion that was brought forth at the last finance board in the interim while we are experiencing the COVID health crisis to allow for being that a good majority of our industry shut down, allowing for the Finance and Facilities Committee to move a little bit quicker in regards to certain decisions financially. With that, I'm gonna have Mr. Kennedy take us into this discussion. Mr. Kennedy.
Mr. Chair, Ben Kennedy for the record, currently currently the Finance Committee is advisory only to the RS, to the RSCBA board. I'm getting a lot of feedback there. Okay, I'm gonna start over. Ben Kennedy for the record, currently the Finance Committee is advisory to the Board of Directors, meaning that any action the Finance Committee takes is subject to ratification and approval by the entire board before it becomes effective. This item has been placed on the agenda to request the Finance Committee to give them authority to act on behalf of the organization during the dependency of the COVID crisis, just to allow the RSCBA to be more proactive and not have to go through the process of holding a Finance Committee meeting and then a special or regular board meeting to to ratify the, the recommendations of finance. So with that, I will turn it back to the board for discussion.
Thank you, Mr. Kennedy, we appreciate that. Mr. Lawson, Vice Chair Lawson, do you serve as the Chair of the Finance Committee currently?
Yes, I do.
And do you want to add some comments to this at this time?
So Ben, we still have to notice a meeting for the Finance Committee to, to make a vote?
Correct, the, the Finance Committee would still be, still subject to open meeting law, you've got to have a three-day notice before you hold a meeting. This item would just allow the Finance Committee to bind the organization versus its current role of just being advisory to the full board.
So could we make a decision, a decision's gotta be made by 2 o'clock today, could we make that decision, then come back, notice the meeting and then notify the board?
No, so to, to take action, it's gotta be taken in a duly noticed meeting. There is an emergency exception to the open meeting law that says if there exists an actual unforeseeable emergency, the, the notice period can be waived for noticing a meeting. So it would depend on sort of facts and circumstances. And if it was something that you could invoke the emergency exception, then, you know, Finance Committee could hold a meeting today at 2 and approve it. And it would be, it would be a duly noticed meeting. If it doesn't rise to the level of being an actual unforeseeable emergency, then you'd still have to go through the three-day notice process.
Okay. I'm curious to hear from Mr. Kornstein, his thoughts.
And I, just for the, for the board's information, construct of the Finance Committee is Vice Chair Lawson, Member Don Kornstein, Member Andy Chapman and Member Mark Sturbens are the four members that rise of the Finance Committee at this time. So, Mr. Kornstein, if you have any comments, we'll open the floor to Mr. Kornstein.
To me, this is, you know, pretty straightforward, any assistance we can provide to management as we're going through this process is a benefit. I do think there will be the opportunity if something really is time-sensitive, you know, to, to waive the notice provision as Ben just referenced. So most, it, it's almost like a working group that would go back to the board with a recommendation, but at least the board would know that some groundwork was done before they have to consider any situation that they're being asked to vote on. So I would support whatever latitude we can, or authority we can delegate to finance, understanding what Ben described as the rules.
Thank you, Mr. Kornstein. Any just further discussion?
I think the only thing that I would add on there, Lucy, is that we have regular meetings with the, the Finance Committee. And maybe we do it weekly, we do it via, you know, video conference the same way so that we can make decisions on a, on a weekly basis if necessary and then make those emergency decisions if needed. That way, at least we have a stand-up meeting that is noticed. We have the meeting, great, we don't have the meeting, no big deal. You know, we do a lot of that during session where we have a, a regular meeting scheduled and it is open to the public, so, you know, they choose to attend or not.
Okay.
Chair, Mr. Caricelli. And Ms. Cunningham.
Okay, Mr. Caricelli, the floor is yours.
Thank you. This item, agenda item was puzzling to me and I gave it a lot of thought in the last couple of days. So I wanted to read through my thoughts. We just identified our interim CEO while our, while our search to fill the position is taking place. We have a CFO and Mr. Chisel that has decades of experience and the rest of our executive team is in place and performing their roles. I feel the system in place is more than adequate. If additional meetings are needed for a specific item, then we should bring the group together more often. In my opinion, this board's primary role is advisory with an emphasis on fiduciary responsibility. What we don't need is to be inserting ourselves into the daily operations that is a function for our staff. So those are the thoughts that I came up with after giving this a lot of thought. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Caricelli, Ms. Cunningham.
Thank you, I just want to mention, one of the recommendations staff was going to make is to have a standing facility finance committee meeting every week into the foreseeable future until we get out of this. And so we would be stylized to notice and have that every other week, just food for thought, thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Cunningham. Ms. Olson, is there anybody wishing to speak at this time?
There is not.
Okay, thank you. Right, so at this time, as it's been offered to us by Ms. Cunningham that they would set a standing bi-weekly meeting to, bi-monthly, I should say, bi-monthly meeting to have, convene the Finance Facilities Committee to make these decisions. However, it would bind the RSCBA and Finance Direction without full board approval is the way the, the agenda item is written. Is there a motion on the floor at this time?
I'll make the motion.
I have a motion to accept, I have a motion to accept the changes as provided in the agenda by Mr. Kornstein, do I have a second?
Mark Sturbens, I would second.
Second for Mr. Sturbens. All right, I have a motion and a second, is there any further discussion, Ms. Olson?
Mr. Kennedy.
Mr. Kennedy.
Mr. Chair, I guess just two, two points I'd like to raise for the board's consideration is if we want to try to better define the authorization this committee has and whether this is, it's ongoing or if we want to, if there's some sort of time limit to this, this authorization, and will this committee go back to being an advisory committee, say after the COVID or after the, the declarations lifted, et cetera? Just throwing that out there for the board's thought.
Thank you, Mr. Kennedy, you know, those are, I, I was about to bring that up as well, I have those same questions. Is this only for the period of the health crisis and the shutdown of the industry? Is this until we are able to seat a acting CEO? What would be the time limits that we would set forth on this, this change? And then secondly, are we giving full discretion to this? Or is there a dollar amount or sizable contract amount that would we, that the board would want to see as whole? And would the Chair, how would that, how would the Chair of the Finance and Facilities Committee bring that for?
Mr. Chair, Mr. Chapman.
Thank you for the record, Andy Chapman. Chairman Lucy, I was just gonna bring up that same point, you know, I, I do sit on this Finance Committee. I do believe it's really the board has that policy fiduciary oversight. Certainly during this time period, things are certainly different and unique. So I would, I would suggest some timeframe that would allow the committee to work with the staff, bringing that information through to the board, but in a set period of time during this particular crisis and not to advocate, and that may be too strong of a word, but to advocate this responsibility to the committee.
Thank you, Mr. Chapman. Any discussion from any of the board members?
Ed Lawson.
Mr. Vice Chair.
I, I see this more as an advisory type of a deal with the ability to bind the RSCBA if we need to. I don't see us going in and micromanaging the day-to-day operation. But to have a group of board members that staff can bounce questions off of to help them make decisions during that time, I mean, obviously the interim CEO has authority up to $50,000. I don't, you know, see this unless there's something catastrophic out there. I don't see this committee really approving any above that or, you know, anything bigger. Just because, I, I just think it's more for, we're in an unusual time. And if we have to react to get a good deal or to, to make a decision that makes perfect sense, it's, that's just the ability of it. But I think more so, it's in, we're in this uncharted territory where staff could ask the questions of, you know, the decades and decades of experience in that, in the the three other board members and, and, you know, political back.
It would be my recommendation that this, if this motion carries that this would only be, remain in effect until a new permanent CEO is sat and the current pandemic issue crisis is over. I think those would be the two factors, whichever comes first. But I would make sure that that would be the limiting factor of this realization for the Finance Committee. Also say that I would hope that that would be exactly how this committee would operate is that it would be just advisory for the period of time, but would be able to make swift decisions. And if need be, felt that they were out to include the entire nine members of the, the full board as we move into the budget process, I do feel it prudent that the board, as it is a whole, be able to chime in on all financial decisions, especially budgetary, as we move into that process. But I do feel that it would be beneficial for the Finance Committee to act as, provide direction and oversight for the interim until we were able to sit a permanent CEO and advert the current crisis, would be my recommendation.
Can we get Mr. Kornstein to amend his motion to include those?
Mr. Kornstein.
I'm in agreement.
Okay, so then, Mr. Sturbens, are you, as a secondor, are you in agreement with those amendments?
Yes, I am, and I just wanted to clarify for the group, and I don't, the other committee members can correct, correct me if I'm wrong, but the spirit of this request was not to authorize large purchases or projects or anything. It was more to authorize the, the staff to make aggressive cost-saving issues that they may not have been authorized to do when times of the essence during the, the COVID-19 crisis. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Sturbens, so I've got an amended motion and a secondary agreed. I will call for a roll call vote, Madam Clerk, unless there is any further discussion, and Ms. Olson.
There is no one.
Okay, we'll call for a roll call vote at this time, Ms. Carlson, please, call the roll.
Roll call vote for item E3, Mr. Caricelli.
No.
Mr. Chapman. Mr. Kornstein.
Yes.
Mr., Ms. Keel.
Yes.
Mr. Lawson.
Yes.
Chairman Lucy.
Yes.
Mayor Sheeby.
Yeah.
Ms. Silver.
Yes.
Mr. Sturbens.
Yes.
That's an eight to one vote on Item E3.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. The roll, the Item E3, the delegation of the Finance Committee has now, depending on, had that motion passes, and that will be in effect until a permanent, the permanent CEO is sat, or we are adverted the COVID-19 crisis. All right, we are on to Item F1. This is Finance, Presentation, Discussion, and Possible Action Regarding the RSCBA Contingency Operations Plan, Cost-Cutting Measures, and Possible Budget Revisions for Fiscal Year 2020 and 2021 for the Reno Sparks Convention Visitors Authority. Mr. Chisel, I'm assuming that you will take us into this.
Actually, it will be Jennifer.
Okay, Ms. Cunningham, my apologies, Ms. Cunningham.
No worries. We will be sharing the presentation with executive staff. I want the board to know that the executive staff has been meeting daily in order to keep each other informed and to discuss business operations. We're managing through the crises, like I just said, with, we're proposing Finance Facility Committee meeting every other week, every two weeks, to provide direction as needed. You all should have gotten an email from the RSCBA yesterday updating you on key metrics and highlights. We plan to send this communication out every week. Finally, we want to maintain our monthly board meeting schedule and keep the entire group informed, and have them available for direction as we manage through these challenging times. As I just mentioned, the next slide is, real quickly, the communication that we want to be sending out to the board and stakeholders on a weekly basis. We want to inform the board of large groups that have canceled or postponed, and any other booking successes that we have from the sales department. We'll include metrics from the website, interaction from our social posts, and any media exposure we get. We will touch on tourism sales activities. And also, we have been working with NDOT for installing a traffic counter in Verdi that was finally installed in December. So, we don't have year-over-year comparisons, but we will be able to have a comparison month over month, and we'll be including that. I think most importantly, the board wants to hear about the sales groups and get an update on that, so I will turn this over to Mike Larigetta for a discussion on the sales activities.
...numbers this fiscal versus prior year. This update will cover, also cover all group cancellations, our postponements, and groups that remain definite for the timeframe of March 2020 through June of 2020. As you can see on the slide that is presented in front of you, year-to-date through March, our group number is 172,915 against a goal of 190,665, or 90% to goal year-to-date. In terms of where we're at to prior year, the 172,915 is obviously above the 133,991 to last year. However, I'd like to point out that the 133, 991 also includes two years of inter-bike cancellation, which represents 44,474 room nights. If you take into consideration those, that cancellation inter-bike, we're slightly behind pace of prior year. Go to the next slide, please. We've been tracking on a daily basis all of our groups as it relates to cancellations, postponements, and definites for the timeframe of March through June of this fiscal year. These groups, I'd like to point out, I think it's important to recognize that these are all groups that were sourced, or the RSCBA sales team had a part in booking, so this does not reflect groups that were booked directly with our property stakeholders. So, as of April 1st, we've had 12 groups canceled, a total cancellation room night total of 9,595. Of that 9,595, 3,619 canceled in the month of March, and 5,644 canceled in the month of April. Next slide, regards to postponed room nights. As of April 1st, we have 23 groups representing over 50,000 room nights have postponed their group programs that were scheduled to meet March through June. It is important, again, to emphasize that these groups have not canceled. They have made the decision through communication with our sales team located both in-market and throughout the country to identify dates in the future where they can meet and still conclude their commitment to the destination. The sales team is daily in contact with these clients, and we're working also with our stakeholders into identify dates that makes the most sense in terms of their calendar availability, in terms of the client's calendar availability, and also as it relates to availability of room inventory and space inventory for our partners. Next slide, please, for definite room nights. For the months of May and June, we have 26 groups representing over 66,000 room nights that remain definite and scheduled to meet. As you can see, the majority of these room nights, 51,828 fall in the month of June. We realize groups being allowed to gather, especially in large numbers, is optimistic. However, our clients have assured us that if the federal government and the Governor of Nevada allow people to gather in large numbers, they will move forward with their meetings and sporting events. In fact, we received an announcement today from the Reno Rodeo that they have complete intention to move forward with this June's event. In closing, there has obviously been a decrease in group lead activity over the last three months, or last three weeks. However, the misconception that sales has stopped is simply not accurate. From March 16th through April 1st, we have received 15 new group leads representing over 59,000 room nights. These leads are the results of continued prospecting, communication with our clients, third parties, and professional relationships. With that, I'd be happy to answer any questions from the board.
Mr. Chair, Mr. Caricelli.
Mr. Caricelli, the floor is yours.
Thank you. Mike, where does the bowling group fall in those numbers? Or does, is it in there somewhere? It has to be.
Mike Larigetta, for the record, Mr. Caricelli, these numbers do not reflect USBC. These are purely groups that we have identified, that we have been a part of in terms of sourcing to our properties, and also new leads representing new room nights for the future.
This is, now again, what is the latest with the Bowling Congress? Are they delaying their attendance date, or their tournament date, or what are they doing?
I know Jennifer can speak this too well, but, and correct me if I'm wrong, Ms. Cunningham, again, Mike Larigetta for the record, the last update I received was that the USBC was proceeding with a delayed start date of May 21st.
Jennifer Cunningham, for the record, I'll pop in. I'm frequent communication with USBC. They have assured me that they have every intention to continue the open tournament. They even indicated if it takes until November, they're still going to come. Right now, they've postponed to May 23rd start date, I believe. They indicated they've gotten a lot of calls from members, which indicate, the members have all said, please, please do not cancel the tournament. So, we're keeping in track, and we're keeping an eye on bookings that we have scheduled at the bowling stadium that might be conflicted if the tournament moves on top of them. So, that's what I have for the USBC.
Thank you, Ms. Cunningham. Ms. Olson, is there any other questions from any of the board?
There are not.
Ms. Cunningham, is there, is there another, Mr. Chisel, or do you have another portion of this press?
Next is Mr. Chisel, into a little bit more of the contingency plan. Thank you.
All right, this is Robert Chisel for the record. Just want to establish some background on our financial position, and kind of go back to the beginning, starting with our financial policies. As you all are aware, as part of the strategic plan that was approved by the board and is updated annually by the board, there are the following financial policies. One, maintain general fund reserves with a minimum of 10% expenditures. This fiscal year, there was about 11% reserves. Two, maintain a capital reserve account of $1 million. We have that $1 million reserve account. Debt sinking fund placed 15% of room tax revenues in excess of $22 million into an early retirement of the debt. Over the last three years, we have reduced the debt by about $4.8 million with an interest savings of about $2.5 million. Four, establish rainy day fund. This fiscal year, the rainy day fund had the $1 million placed in it, and it is there. In addition, there's the annual capital funding of 10% of room tax, up to $2.5 million, and an air service fund of $1.5 million, which was budgeted in this year's budget. Next slide. Next slide, Erica. Okay, thank you. This, just kind of basically, this was the original budget we had approved for this fiscal year. It shows $52.9 million, and just to reiterate, as everyone probably already knows, though, room tax collections and tourism surcharge are our primary sources of revenue. Facility revenue is a little over $9 million is the next biggest item, and so all these are impacted by the COVID-19 issue. Next slide. This is our budgeted expenditures, approximately $56 million of expenditures. This is, a couple of things to note here. The primary expenditures of the agency, supplies and services, at $14 million, and that $14 million, of that $11.6 million is for facility operations by ASM. So, that is one of our largest expenditure areas, followed by promotion and advertising at $13 million, then debt service at $11 million. The other thing I'd like to point out is payroll only represents 13% of our normal budget, which, those of you familiar with government, is very different, as the number for government is usually 75% to 80%. And with hotel properties, you guys probably are seeing 40% to 60% labor rates for your expenditures. Next slide. And this takes us through February 29th. This just shows what the budget was by month through February 2020, and the actual through February 2020 for revenues. As you can see, we're pretty much right on the mark. Facility revenue was up $1.2 million, but other revenues were pretty much right on the mark as to what the budget was. Next slide. This shows our expenditures for that same period through February were overall below budget. Supplies and services was over. That reflects the additional cost of the facilities. Again, remember, supplies and services is primarily the facilities. But remember, in the prior slide, it showed an additional $1.2 million of facility revenue. The additional expenditures there is offset by that $1.2 million of additional revenue. So, going into February, or into March, we were in really good shape financially. Next slide. Okay, this takes us into the beginning of the COVID incident. Our available cash is shown here as $13.5 million as of February 29th. Again, talking about our rainy day funds for capital, there's $1 million, a little bit of interest earnings over the time, that's, it's a little bit more. General fund had $5.8 million in it. The general fund rainy day had a little over $1 million. The surcharge fund had $5.6 million, a total of about $13.5 million. We believe a base cash of about $1.5 million is where we would like to keep our cash flow, just to keep expenditures in line with revenues, as revenues don't always come in at the same cycle as expenditures. Next slide.
This slide, this is where we landed, the Finance Committee. Currently, we're operating under objective number one. We're cutting and reducing all possible expenses. ASM has a skeleton crew managing the facilities, and we feel it's important to do our part to keep people employed while extending the cash as far as possible. Objective number two, be ready for the rebound, to drive future business. It's important to be prepared and at the forefront when the travel rebounds. Our community is relying on us to do so. We've put together a six-point action plan that we've already implemented to save or retain funds, and I'd like to turn it back over to Mr. Chisel to highlight the six points.
Here they are. In summary, for the remainder of the year, it's important to note, we have already cut 51% of our operating budget, or $7.8 million out. It's listed here, the different areas, marketing, sales, tourism, admin, and other areas. Hiring freeze, we have, of course, have a hiring freeze in place. We have four vacant positions currently. They will remain unfilled. Travel and entertainment expenses have all been eliminated. All advertising, media, conference, spam, sites, sales missions eliminated until further notice. Operating contracts, we've gone through all of our operating contracts and reached out to the vendors, and have either reduced the monthly retainers, deferred the amount, or canceled the contract outright. All ASM employees, as Jennifer had mentioned, have been furloughed, you know, with the exception of staff needed to keep the buildings in current operating condition. I will note that the Reno Events Center has more staff working there, as it is now being used as a nightly shelter. So, our staff, or ASM staff, is keeping the facility cleaned for the shelter. We will get reimbursed for those costs. We're hoping through the EOC. In addition, the RSCC is being used by the Nevada Food Bank, and is also being looked at as potential federal emergency medical station, and so there is some staff that may be assisting in keeping that facility, at least to a neat, a temperature that is conducive to their working. Next slide.
Chisel, before you move on, Ms. Keel has a question.
This is Shannon Keel. You may have, you kind of answered my question at the end, but I was going to ask about security for the convention center and other facilities while they are not being in use. You mentioned one engineer at each property, and obviously, with not a lot of activity, and not a lot of people walking around, I just want to make sure that our facilities are being looked after from a security standpoint as well.
Yes, they are. This is Robert Chisel again. We do have security, 24-hour security. We did scale back as much as possible, but we do have security operating. And then, at the Reno Events Center, during operation of the shelter, there is an additional six security guards there. Our security is contracted through ESI, so it is not ASM or RSCBA employees. It's a separate security agreement. So, yes, there is security in place. Any more questions?
I am not seeing any. A moment. Carry on.
Next, staff expenses. The executive team has met and made a determination that we are going to look at proposing reduction in expenses resulting in about $84,000 a month in savings. Staff would be taking graduated pay cuts from 5% to 25%. The higher-paid employees would be at the 25%. The lower-paid would be at the 5%. This reduction amounts to about 17% of monthly salary expenses. The lower paid would be at the 5%. This reduction amounts to about 17% of monthly salary expenses. This would be monitored and reviewed at the bi-weekly Finance and Facility Committee meeting as we go forward. Next slide.
Mr. Chisel, Ms. Keel has a question.
Yes.
Shannon Keel, does this include sales managers?
Yes, it does. This is all staff. So it's graduated from 5% to 25%. I could pull up, it is basically those earning less than $50,000 would take a 5% cut. Those earning less than $70,000 take a 10% cut. And those earning less than $120,000 take a 20% cut and any of those above take a 25% cut.
This is Shannon Keel again. I will leave it to the expertise of Finance Committee meeting and the executive team to make the best decisions. Obviously, the sales managers, you know, we still need them out there to be selling for the future.
Can anyone hear me? This is Ann Silver. I'm on the conference line.
I can hear you.
I have a question. Robert and perhaps Molly, can you define furlough, furloughed versus laid off? Hello?
Yeah, Molly, do you want?
Good morning. This is Molly Rezak for the record. So technically, a furlough is a, it's not, it's not defined in Nevada law, but it means a temporary layoff of employees during a situation like this. So they would not be getting, if an employee is furloughed, they're not getting paid. They are not doing any work.
But they are retained on your insurance, on the insurance plan and receiving benefits correctly?
What can happen, yes, is that almost universally, healthcare providers, and I believe that to be the case here with the RSBCBA as well, has said that those contractual provisions with your healthcare, your insurance carrier that requires a certain amount of hours per week worked, even if employees are furloughed and thereby not working those hours, they are waiving those requirements at this time.
I have one more question.
Making benefits. Go ahead.
I have one more question, Mr. Chair, if I can be heard.
Absolutely, Ms. Silver. Go ahead.
Thank you. With, I have a question. Given the fact that payroll and related expenses amount to only 13% of the budget. And while I appreciate all the work that's been done by the Finance Committee, as a former HR person involved in major layoffs through 9/11 and beyond in the private sector, would it make more sense to, given morale issues, the departure of a former CEO, et cetera, and being in some limbo relative to an interim and then a CEO, would it make more sense to have everyone take a 5% or 10% versus this graduated formula so that there's a feeling that everyone is in this together and not punishing people by virtue of their salary?
Thank you, Ms. Silver. I mean, those comments would probably be directed to Ms. Cunningham and the Finance Team as they were the ones that have offered this suggestion. A good majority of those individuals that are offering to take that 25% cut are the ones that created this plan. So I would turn this over to Ms. Cunningham and her executive team to make that decision.
I'm not sure how to respond to Ms. Silver. I think we all just felt that we would be as aggressive as we could be to avoid having to furlough any employees. If the board feels that we could reduce that amount because it is a very small percentage of the budget, I'm sure all of the employees would appreciate it.
Mr. Chair, Mr. Chapman.
Mr. Chapman, the floor is yours.
Thank you for the record, Andy Chapman. When the conversation that we had at the committee meeting on Monday was a broad conversation that kind of went from one end of the spectrum to the other. I think we came out of that committee meeting asking the staff to take those discussions, one of them being, you know, how much can we cut to the bone versus, you know, how do we keep operating and be ready to respond when this crisis is starting to peak so that we're in front of the bottom part of the bell and that we're back in the marketplace, ready to drive the business and the opportunities? So I think what staff did was took that discussion, because this is really the first time, I believe, either from a committee standpoint or a board standpoint, that we've seen this recommendation by staff. So this particular recommendation was not vetted by the committee. It was input to the staff to come back to maybe a mid-ground somewhere between, you know, we're cutting everything to the bone to operations as normal, which of course, we know we can't do. The operation is normal and in my opinion, we can't do the, cut the organization to the bone. There's nothing left and nobody to respond, no one talking to our client base and no one being ready to answer the phone when business comes back. So to me, this seems to be a little more aggressive than I would have liked or that I would necessarily put forward. I think we need to have a staff that's ready to go. I think we also have to be conscious of non-essential spending. And going back to the amount of payroll and the percent of payroll as a whole, where else there might be other opportunities, I think is one that we need to discuss. Just to clarify, at least from my perspective as a committee meeting member at that meeting on Monday.
Mr. Chapman.
I, I'm sorry, this is Ann Silver and I can't raise my hand.
Ms. Silver.
Our Zoom wasn't working today. I appreciate that if this is coming from senior management and they have no problem with 25%, I'm wondering how many people are involved, and I'm just looking for it again on the sheet, how many people are furloughed? And if you were to spread out the cost savings and payroll amongst all the employees, could you prevent furloughing anyone?
I'd like to turn that over to Mr. Chisel to respond.
This is Robert Chisel. The current plan has no furloughs in it. That was why we had taken the aggressive cuts to our salaries. And so that there are 53 employees on the roster and we have four vacant positions. So that's what we have currently, approximately 8% empty positions.
So everyone is being paid and maintained on payroll with pay cuts as outlined?
That is correct. With, you know, when we talked about furloughed staff, that was ASM's facility staff.
Okay, thank you.
Are there any further presentations from the boards or discussion from the executive staff?
Yeah, next slide, just kind of to reiterate. This just shows a cash flow, taking that $12 million in a couple of scenarios. As you can see by the letters, there's been a lot of scenarios that we've been working on, but we, to keep it simple, we kept with the two scenarios, a moderate recovery and a slow recovery. And just kind of showing the cuts that have taken place and the operation as we go forward, how it affects cash. With the moderate recovery, we continue to function easily into the next year. The budgets for 2021 are being developed as we speak, so really, all we have as firm numbers is through June. July through the following year, those budgets are being worked on as we speak. As you can imagine, all the work that we have done to date is pretty much out the window. So we have to start all over again, but the 2021 budget will come to the Finance Committee and the Board in May as accordance with the NRS. A couple of things that also to note is there were a number of capital projects that were in process that had to continue because they were partly done. And it was more cost-effective to complete them than to try to stop them. Couple of examples are the roof at the Hall III. The roof was in about halfway, 60% completed when this started hitting. The sign out front was paid for, at least three quarters paid for before this started. And a number of other projects through were in design or otherwise had work done on them. We have canceled all capital projects. That includes the livestock paving job for the armory and the livestock paving repairs of the north parking lot and the livestock event center bathroom. So just, those were several big projects and I wanted to make sure everyone knew they were on hold and stopped. So I have, would be happy to answer any questions in regarding to the cash flows. And if you look on the bottom, when we talk about the taxable room revenue, that to budget, that is what we are projecting the percentage of the revenues will be, not necessarily just occupancy or ADR. It's a combination of both for our taxable room revenue. Currently, in discussions with properties that are still open, the select, some select properties are still open. We're seeing about a 30% occupancy of the select properties currently. So just to give you an idea of what we're seeing out in the market today.
Mr. Chisel, Mr. Kornstein.
Mr. Kornstein, go ahead.
You're on mute.
Cash flow scenarios. We had looked at other ones at Finance Committee. And you had just said that we are comfortably, in the moderate recovery, we're comfortably in cash. So I'm curious, in prior years, if you look at your projecting as a moderate recovery, which I would say I think is optimistic, a little more optimistic than not, you show a million and a quarter of cash. How would that compare to prior years when you were finishing? And I realize we're on a fiscal, but if you were to compare that amount of cash moving into a new calendar year, is that lower than normal, sort of normal or above normal? And then I've got, you know, another question on the other slow recovery, but I wanted to give you a chance to answer one at a time.
That would be below normal because normally we have more revenue and expenditures. So if you're looking at a normal year, what we've, well, last year, as you can see, we're running around $12 million of cash. Part of that was we were trying to build up our cash reserves according to our strategic plan. A million and a half equates to about 16% of expenditures for a year based on that, based on the expenditures of a flat budget, as we're saying. So it's probably keep more in line with what you would look for in a government entity. Usually about 10% of revenue or a fund balance for expenditures is what you look for. 8.3% is 30 days. If you look at the NRS for government entities, they talk about 8.3% as proposed before it could be subject to collective bargaining. So that's kind of the benchmark most governments in Nevada use.
Okay.
Does that answer your question?
Yeah, it does. And my comment would be that if you're at that level in a normal environment, I would still think that's pretty tight. But that would be, you know, according to you with NRS, that would be an acceptable level. But we're not in a normal environment. And when one looks at your slow recovery, we're, I think the board needs to understand, we're projecting our own projections in this slow recovery. We're out of money in November. November is not that far off. And if you think about the timeline for finding a new CEO, it's not going to be helpful to say we're 60 days away from running out of money or some amount like that. I believe, and I said this at Finance Committee, I believe we've got to take more significant steps to cut our overhead. Nobody likes furloughing people. Nobody likes to do that. But to have 12 people on a sales staff, so that, because we don't furlough somebody and people are maybe taking a 5% pay cut, is not what's going to preserve the runway for this organization. So I think management needs to take a harder look. And maybe we need to come back to the Finance Committee and then the Board. I don't know if we have to approve this today. But to me, this is frighteningly tight with the realities of the world. And you could look at a lot of the other companies in, you know, the tourist-related industry, gaming-related industry. And you'll find that the percentages of people that have been laid off and furloughed are dramatically higher than anything that we have here. And I think our responsibility is to make sure that we have runway to provide the services longer, you know, longer term, and I mean to next year. So that's my comment.
Mr. Chair, Mr. Larrigetta.
Mr. Lucy had to leave the meeting, so I'm going to be taking over for him.
Mr. Vice Chair, Mr. Larrigetta.
Thank you, Mr. Silver. For the record, Mike Larrigetta, just a comment in regards to Mr. Kornstein's comment as it relates to the size of the staff that is remaining intact. I think it's just comparative and really important to point out that the responsibilities of the RSBCBA sales department are not typical of the majority of the convention centers, convention authorities located across the country. This team is responsible for over 50% of the annual group room nights they're booked in Washoe County per year. We're truly an extension of our hotel partners, which is different than most authorities. And that, that is in play all the time, but during a time of crisis, when our partners may or may not have staff to sell their properties, it is even more critical that our team is selling on their behalf. So whether properties have made the decisions to furlough those staffs or keep them on during this time period, we, our role as an extension of their sales staff becomes even more critical. We've been following what other CBs have been doing. We've been following what hotel companies, from select service to major companies like Wynn and Caesars and MGM have been doing. And we feel that we're in line with having this team intact and selling for the future because we're not selling for today, Mark, we're selling for May or June. We're selling for the rest of the calendar year and into '21 and '22. Thank you.
Mr. Vice Chair, Mr. Sturpins.
Go ahead. Yeah, Mark Sturpins. So I have a question for Mr. Chisel. So if we do not see a quick recover, recovery and we get to the point where we run out of cash point, what options are available to the RSBCBA for liquidity? And just wanted to kind of second Mr. Kornstein's comments. I think, you know, in a time of such uncertainty, I think, you know, drastic measures have to be taken into account and significantly reducing cost and conserving cash needs to be a priority. That was our conversations of the committee on Monday. We didn't come to any conclusions on what that means, but I do think, you know, preserving all cash that we can possibly preserve and, you know, it may be unpopular that we would have to list people off. I think it's a measure that we have to take a really hard look at for the survival of the organization.
This is Robert Chisel. The RSBCBA is fairly limited legally on what it can do as far as revenue. As you know, room tax, surcharge, and facility As you know, room tax surcharge and facility revenues are primary revenue sources. We could look for short-term loans, but I would probably advise against that as it's not usually cost-effective. What I would say is we have a fairly long runway, five to six months looking out. So we're dealing with a lot of unknowns at this point. As I said, we don't know what the room taxes are going to be for March, April, May, and into the future. Like we had mentioned, we are looking at about 30% to 35% of the select properties that have responded to our query. That's their occupancy right now. So we don't know if that'll continue, how far that'll continue, when the travelers will come back. So what we're trying to do is maintain our organization as long as we can to be prepared for the recovery. The recovery is coming. We just don't know when, and we want to be able to be out in front to market and sell Reno Tahoe to, as a destination to the rest of the country and the world.
Mr. Vice Chair, Ms. Keel, and then Mr. Chapman?
Go ahead.
Ms. Keel, you said there's 53 people on staff?
This is Robert Chisel. There's 53 positions. Right now, there's 49.
Okay. And the sales, the sales team accounts for 12, 13 of that?
The, maybe Mike can, I'm pulling it up right now. I don't have the count off my head.
I can hand it over. Mike Larrigetta, for the record, the 12 reflects the number of people that are truly selling, Ms. Keel. So we have eight regional offices located throughout the United States, and then we have four people in-market. The remaining staff consists of business development, admin support, and site inspections and the events team.
Okay. I would recommend that there is a detailed analysis, look at every single position within the RSCBA and what is considered essential in the current environment and who legitimately has, you know, almost at least a full-time work to be done, done week after week. I would imagine, I mean, there are certainly differences in opinion on the sales force right now and their duties. To Mr. Larrigetta's point is to book in the future, and so that's definitely taken into consideration. But as there is also the rest of the team there on, I would imagine there's probably some positions that could be absorbed by other positions. There's probably not full-time work to be done right now. So I would, I would take a good, hard look at every single position and who actually has a full workload right now while basically everything's shut down.
Thank you for the record, Andy Chapman. So, Mr. Chisel, in your scenario C and scenario F, do those include the percentage cuts that you're recommending here? And although I know those payroll not being a larger piece of it, but do those scenarios include those cuts that are being discussed?
Robert Chisel, yes, they do. The slower recovery has less revenue from facilities as well as, of course, room tax, but they both, they have the cuts that we currently have. I do want to reiterate, July through June was finances extrapolation of our current budget numbers. So we don't have a developed budget at this time that the Board has approved. It's just a guess on what the costs are going to be based on May and June of this year.
Mr. Lawson, this is Ann Silver. May I pose a question?
Yes, please.
I would like to recommend, and I'm not sure if this would have collective support, but in light of there being an established financial committee, I would suggest that we also form or add a personnel or human resources component to this committee so that we can collaborate or at least coordinate both the financial needs and certainly any objectives we have for reducing expenses with critical personnel. And to echo what Shannon indicated, you know, it might behoove us to walk through with the senior management, the force and effect of each position, and before we implement an across-the-board salary decrease, do a deep dive, a human resources review of personnel, and then coordinate that with the financial reduction, expense, financial reduction anticipated costs so that we can, say we've looked at this in depth before we just say, let's vote for a payroll reduction across the board graduated by level and salary and furlough some people whom I'm not even, I don't even realize who they are, what positions they hold, and in, and to support Shannon's comments, to look at what composition we have in our, in the RSCBA staff, to what extent they're being kept busy or have additional work to do or in fact are not as critical as others. I'm just posing that as a possibility.
Mr. Vice Chair, Mr. Sturpins?
Mr. Sturpins, go ahead.
I think that's left out before. I don't have a comment.
Mr. Kennedy, is there any issue with what Ms. Silver said, putting that with the Finance Personnel Committee?
So Ben Kennedy, for the record. So currently, our committee structure, we restructured everything back, I think, late last year. Excuse me. So we have a Facilities and Finance Committee and an Executive and Legislative Committee, and I believe, Ms. Rees, I can weigh in on this, but I believe that sort of personnel has been handled in the Executive Legislative Committee. We could certainly hold joint meetings where both committees could sort of discuss. I mean, I think, you know, as part of finance, if the Finance Committee is going to come back and take a hard look at staffing and what's required and whether there's redundancies, Finance Committee could work with Ms. Mill and the, you know, the HR Director to undertake that sort of analysis itself as part of everything else it's considering. Otherwise, I think you could run it through the existing Personnel Committee, which would then, you know, make a recommendation, report back to Finance. And I think, probably given timing, it would make sense to either sort of have that discussion with HR or to combine both committees in a single meeting.
This is Ann Silver. I just have never heard of a Finance Committee, and while I have great respect for those of you who did all this work, not including some human resources perspective. And I offer that if I could be of use. I think to Shannon Keel's point earlier, I don't know the positions, and I don't particularly want to get down in the weeds, but sometimes it's helpful, just as those of you have brought an outside perspective on the financial piece, to have an outside perspective on the HR piece. That's just my suggestion.
And, Joe, Vice Chair Lawson, if I can speak to that. So adding Ms. Silver or having her participate in the Finance Committee, that creates an issue because then we have a full quorum of the Board participating in the committee, which we can't do. We could combine both committees and hold a meeting, or you can have the Finance Committee handle it through the HR issues with executive staff.
To me, though, the Finance Committee would have to take into the HR portion of that. So there is some overlap between that and the Executive Committee.
I know, this is Ann Silver. I'm not trying to create any additional work. I just have never been involved in cutbacks, furloughs, layoffs. I was very much involved in 9/11 with 1,100 employees. I've never heard of a committee that did not have HR depth and HR professional experience in looking at the positions as Shannon may have referred to. If you look at the total number and appreciating that several are not filled, how to look at the, if I can use the word value or interim value of each position in an objective way. Obviously, we don't want to see people without work, but we're going to struggle, to Don's point, for a considerable period of time. None of us can predict at this point when this might be over and how our world will change in terms of people's perceptions about group activities, large conferences, et cetera. So I just think now may be the time, maybe now more than ever, to take a deeper look at staffing and how, when we're talking about such a small percentage being payroll, how to look at this, combined with the financial recommendations, how to look at staffing in a more human resources spotlight. Once again, I, it's just a recommendation.
Vice Chair, Mr. Kornstein, and then Mr. Chapman?
Go ahead. Go ahead, Mr. Kornstein.
I think, I think I'm on.
There you are.
Yeah. So I agree generally and with what you said, but to me, this is the, I think, have two committees meet at the same time is going to turn out to be cumbersome. And this is really why we have now, thankfully, a CEO in place. And I think this is for Jennifer to work through the, you know, details, make a presentation to the Finance Committee. The Finance Committee has further, you know, questions to ask. I think, you know, clearly they can if we need to bring, meaning Finance Committee needs to bring the expertise of other people in. And, you know, then I think we could do that. And certainly Jennifer's got the ability to reach out to any Board member she chooses to get input from before she makes her recommendation. And I think to the point that Matt made earlier, the Board is supposed to be advisory. So we have to rely on our CEO and the management, and I think the critical element here is for Jennifer to get knee-deep in understanding how severe this current environment is and how to preserve the runway for the organization. And, you know, to the point also that was made earlier, I'm not sure when I see that we have 49 out of 53 people retaining jobs, how that's consistent with anything that anybody in the gaming industry is doing, save one company. It was in the press, Caesars has laid off or furloughed 90% of its employee base in order to survive and keep its runway. So I would just suggest that, you know, that we delegate this to the place where it ought to be and have Jennifer do a deeper dive, taking into account what Shannon recommended, which I totally agree what you're recommending, and then come back to the Finance Committee pretty quickly with a recommendation that's different from the one that's on, you know, this agenda. Thanks.
Mr. Chair, Don, this is Ann Silver. Don, I completely agree. If we're prepared to delegate that to Jennifer, I assume we will hear from her after a deeper dive. I think to your point, to Shannon's point, to my own point, times may call for very tough measures, and I think the Board doesn't need to get into the weeds, but certainly enable the interim CEO to do so.
Who else did we have to speak? Was it Mr.?
Mr. Chapman and Ms. Cunningham.
Thank you for the record, Andy Chapman. And I agree with Mr. Kornstein on his points there. I would only offer up that if it felt we needed to reconstitute the Finance Committee by switching out Board members that kind of bring different skill sets in that, that's something that could be considered as well to keep it underneath the quorum.
Thank you, Jennifer Cunningham. I think the best approach and the most efficient, I would love to call upon Ann Silver. You do have a wealth of experience in HR, in prior jobs, and I would like to have you sit down with executive staff and we can go through this. We have sat down and discussed it, but I think to have Ann's perspective and we can talk about employees and positions, that would be great. And then we could present to the Finance Committee. Thank you.
Sounds good. Anybody else? So here's, here's what I'd like to do is I think we'd like to approve what's currently on our agenda, and then we can always make changes and do furloughs as we need to after this deep dive is done and those other things. But I think today we need to do something and not push this decision out for another 30 days or so. Anybody else want to weigh in on that?
Ms. Cunningham?
Thank you. I agree, Ed, and that's, Mr. Lawson, that's one of the reasons that we are asking for Finance Committee meeting every two weeks because as conditions change, we can get more aggressive, we can discuss changes in expenses. I just, I want to remind everyone that we were so aggressive by cutting this $7.8 million out of the budget already. We've been working on it since early March. So we do take it very seriously, and we've done the hard work. So I agree, and we can continue to discuss it at our Finance Committee meetings when we see room tax coming in as compared to our original budget, which have been our mark, our points that we're going to be measuring and monitoring. Thank you.
So Molly Rezak, I need you to weigh in. We have to do a, there's going to be two motions on this item. One is for the adjustment of Jennifer's pay, going back to the pay cut. So I would like you to weigh in on, so the math that you've prepared for this.
This is Molly Rezak for the record. With respect to those two measures, when I did the math with respect to the increase of 20% in Ms. Cunningham's pay to take on the interim CEO role, that puts her at just above the next highest-paid individual at the RSCBA. To give you specifics, her current salary is approximately 183. Adding that 20%, it would be at 220. Then we would propose that she would participate at that new salary in any future pay cut. And given the proposal that was on the Board at the time, which was executive salaries, executives would be taking a pay cut at 25%, that would be her, pay cut would then be with a new total at the interim pay rate of 165. What that means is, is that she would be taking on this new role as interim CEO while still maintaining a 10% cut to her overall normal salary as Executive Vice President. So she would still be participating on, in that cut while assuming this new role. And she was okay with doing that, given the pandemic and everything that the agency is going through.
Any questions from the Board? Okay, so I'm looking for a motion then to approve the increase in salary for Jennifer. I think that's the only part of this that we need at this time. We take the other measure, then obviously she would be qualified as that 25% reduction.
Mr. Vice Chair, Mr. Caricelli?
Mr. Caricelli.
Thank you. I would like to make a motion on what Molly said. The situation is after all the pluses and minuses. Plus 20%, minus 25%, et cetera.
Thank you, sir. Do I have a second?
Ann Silver?
Ann Silver, I'll second that.
Okay. Any further discussion from the board? Okay, I'm going to just call for a verbal vote and see if we can get through that. All those in favor?
Aye.
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 Anybody opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Now, I'm looking for a second motion regarding the proposed salary reductions by the Executive Committee. I guess there's more to that, so operating cost measures and budget revisions.
This is Ann Silver. Just for the record, I object to the reduction in pay structured as, structured as it is, but I yield to the majority. I've made my point. Thank you.
So I'm still looking for a motion on F1.
I'll make the motion.
Okay, Mr. Kornstein.
Vice Chair Lawson, Ben Kennedy. I just wanted to clarify the motion, make sure everybody's clear. So I think what, and Mr. Kornstein, correct me if I'm wrong, the motion is to approve the plan that staff has presented today with the understanding that it is subject to further refinement and revision as it comes back to Finance Committee in the future.
And the answer is yes, and I would just change one word, that it will be refined as opposed to subject to being refined.
Okay, for a second.
Mark Sturven, I'll second.
Mr. Sturven, second. Any further discussion? Okay, hearing seen, none. All those in favor say aye.
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 Opposed? Nobody opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Okay, thank you. Let's move on to F2, review discussion of possible approval of the payment of $100,000 to the City of Reno for funding to the Downtown Business Improvement District. Who's going to take this? Robert?
Robert Chizel, for the record. Several years ago, the City of Reno approached the RSCBA to help fund the Business Improvement District in the downtown area at $100,000 per fiscal year. The RSCBA Board of Directors approved the funding of that with contingent that it comes back every year for board approval. We have made one payment of $100,000 back in 2018. This is the second payment of $100,000 that had been budgeted in our budget for this fiscal year. We are seeking budget or board direction as to whether to make that payment or alternative.
Okay, any board discussion on this item?
Mr. Kornstein, and then Ms. Keel.
So, Robert, I have a question regarding other commitments, you know, organizations that we support in the local community like the airport, et cetera. If you could just describe what other cutbacks, if any, are part of the, either the proposal we just approved or contemplated, because they're still hanging out as commitments. Thanks.
Robert Chizel, again, we belong to a number of organizations as the RSCBA, from the Chamber of Commerce to EDON and here, the BID. Currently, we don't have any of the other expenditures in front of us, so we haven't had to make an action as to whether we will be funding them or not. Our intent as they go forward to, is to evaluate each one of those on the basis of their merit and look at our funding availability. So those are the primary three that we are associated with. Every other group that we can, from the destination management organizations, we have canceled or asked for a reduction in payment to.
I have a follow-up question. Robert, is there a time deadline for that payment?
I am not aware of one. I would probably defer to have to get some information from the BID. This was supposed to be funding for this fiscal year, but we haven't gotten the information as to whether they need it now or not.
Okay, well, so I have a suggestion in light of the fact that we don't know who else might come back to us with, you know, affirming their requests, adjusting their requests, et cetera. And since we have no time deadline and given the unsettled environment where many people are having payments delayed, I suggest we just table this right now and we tell the City of Reno that because of many moving parts in our budget and the revisions that we're, you know, the analysis revisions we're going through, that, you know, there's no decision at this time and just kick the can for a while.
Ms. Keel, you have a question?
Thank you, this is Shannon Keel. I would echo Mr. Kornstein's comments. I think we need more information. I don't see a recommendation from staff here, just simply that there's this $100,000, whether we should do it or not. You know, I think we definitely need to understand timing and making a $100,000 payment right now is, needs to come with, I would say, extreme scrutiny. So I think we need more information before we can approve or deny this payment.
Chair, Mr. Chapman.
Mr. Chapman?
For the record, Andy Chapman, I agree with the past two board member points on that, you know, given what these T-bid funds are used for, from what I could tell in the staff report, there's certainly going to be a lag period before we see a lot of activity back into that zone. So I would agree with that. I would also just point out one item, and I'm not sure Jennifer, Ms. Cunningham was going to speak to this as well, but I sit as Chair of the Regional Air Service Corporation, of which this board is a paying member as well. And that organization has suspended both the Q4 payments and Q1 and Q2 going into next year for all of our partners in the RASK organization. So that's just as an FYI as well.
Mr. Chapman, can you tell me, is that, I think it's $250,000 we pay a year for that?
So Jennifer, we would have to help me do, understand that one, but I believe it is 250. I think, I'm not sure exactly where the payments have come in already, whether there will be a refund coming back to the RSCBA, if they've already paid more, but I'm sure Jennifer has that information.
Jennifer Cunningham, we support RASK at $250,000. And off the top of my head, we have paid through the third quarter payments. I think we would be owed back, I think it's something around $60,000, that we could either roll over to next year or request that we be reimbursed at this point. So that's an option that we will be discussing. We won't make a decision to pay into RASK again until after the first quarter of next fiscal year, I think, October, something like that. I have it.
I think it may be, Andy Chapman, I think it may be January, January 2021.
That was just for information purpose, but, so we still have the F2 agenda items, so I'm looking for a motion on that unless there's any further discussion.
Yes, discussion. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Oh, thanks. I would, I would really like to invite Mr. Stotinsky to our next board meeting or whatever you see fit. I think we need to remember the ambassadors are, I'd like to see if, you know, how they're modifying that business model, because I, from what I understand, it's become even more challenging for the ambassadors downtown with businesses closed and things like that. So the extra eyes that you can have down there could be extremely beneficial at a much lower cost. And one of the things we're seeing is our police department, many of them are going into quarantine, because obviously they're in situations that are, you know, putting them in, at risk and have to go into quarantine. And we're incredibly fearful of what that looks like. So I'm just saying, any other layers of protection, I want everyone to keep that in mind. But I think it would be helpful to have Mr. Stotinsky come in and hear kind of about what they're doing, because, you know, we've got to protect all parts of the city, but especially downtown, because I always say downtown is a city within a city. So I just want everyone to remember that they still play a very important role on safety and looking over those businesses in the downtown core. And their job is very challenging right now, because we know that this virus has a tendency to break out in more dense areas and also homeless populations and things of that nature. So I want everyone to be mindful of that. Thanks.
Mr. Vice Chair, Mr. Caricelli.
Mr. Caricelli.
I pressed a button by mistake.
Okay. All right, with the mayor's comments, Madam Mayor, do you want to make a motion on this item, or do you want someone else?
Sure, I would just motion that we table it until we have a report from Mr. Stotinsky.
Looking for a second?
Maybe, and just let me also clarify, I don't know, maybe he has, maybe he has already, you know, cut back the workforce. I mean, that's another thing that we're finding, is a lot of people are scared to go to work because they are in environments that are sort of high-risk or detrimental, and those folks most certainly would be. So, you know, maybe they, he might be having a hard time finding people, and so I think we shouldn't make any decisions until we see what the model looks like. So I'll motion for that. Thanks, Vice Chair.
Looking for a second?
Andy Chapman, a second.
We have a second, but Mr. Chapman, any further discussion? Seen none, we'll call for a verbal vote. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Thank you. G1, so then, I know, Madam Clerk, you'll go ahead and make sure that that item gets on our next board meeting, correct?
Correct.
Thank you. Item G1, new temporary human resource policies to comply with Family First Coronavirus Response Act. Ms. Neal?
Hi, good afternoon, Mr. Vice Chair, members of the board. For the record, Sheri Nail, Human Resource Director. The RSCBA staff are recommending the adoption of these temporary policies to comply with the recently passed Family First Coronavirus Response Act that went into effect on April 1st. So these will be retroactive. The two policies are the emergency paid sick leave as well as expanding the family medical leave. The emergency paid sick leave will provide full-time staff up to 80 hours and part-time staff on their average hour work for a two-week leave. The payout of the EPSL differs depending on the COVID-19-related reason for the employee's leave, and then expanding the family medical leave, which would guarantee employees' pay who must care for a child whose school or childcare is closed or otherwise unavailable due to COVID-19. In addition, the HR team has been working with Paycom, our software company, to implement the codes necessary to comply and maintain accurate records. So we're asking for the board's approval to move forward on these temporary policies. Any questions?
Questions from the? This is, yes, Chair, Mr. Chairman, I have a question. This is Ann Silver. I'm confused as to why you need board approval based on a federal mandate. I know of no organization that has had to approve new policies to enact what is now federal law regarding the COVID-19 Family Medical, Extended Family Medical Leave Act and the Payroll Protection Act. I'm not, I'm unclear why the board needs to approve this.
In working with Molly Rezak, sorry, Sheri Nail for the record, and Ben Kennedy, I was advised that we should put this on the agenda for board approval. These policies will be retroactive to April 1st and run through December 31st, 2020.
And this is Molly Rezak for the record, and I'll just answer that. As a general policy and practice, the RSCBA, the policy board, has enacted and approved policies for all of the federally mandated laws that the RSCBA is subject to. And so because we had a board meeting in play just after the enactment of these emergency and we had these policies ready, we felt that we should just inform the board and have the board look at these and approve these to make sure that the board was informed that we were in compliance with the federal mandate.
Got it. So you're not asking for approval, you're letting us know you are in compliance.
Well, the board does actually approve all policies for all the RSCBA. They have approved all employment policies in the past, including policies that are under federally mandated laws required, for example, just general FMLA. So it's the exact same thing. I will tell you that these policies are in line and do not go beyond anything that is required under the act.
Got it.
Molly, does this also, this is Ed Lawson, does this also help us qualify for government reimbursements?
It can, it will depend, you know, obviously, when, under the expanded FMLA and EPSL leave, under the Family First Coronavirus Act, when an employee takes that leave, payroll tax credits are available to payback employers with respect to the paid leave that is paid out.
Any further discussion from the board? Looking for a motion?
I'll make a motion, this is Shannon Keel.
Go ahead, Shannon.
I make a motion to approve the, for Family First Coronavirus Response Act.
Thank you. Looking for a second?
Mr. Chair, Mr.?
Go ahead, I'm sorry.
Mr. Chapman?
I'll second that.
All right, any further discussion from the board? Do a verbal vote, all those in favor, say aye.
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 All those opposed?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Okay, we're on to board member comments regarding items for future meetings. Is there any, talked about a lot in almost three hours? Is there anything else that we'd like to see on our future meetings?
Yeah, I, Vice Chair, I would like to see what our complaint policy is.
Okay.
And I would like to discuss that, if all complaints go to the chair, whether it's from the board or the executive level, the executive staff, that all those complaints should go to the entire board.
Okay. Any other items in the future?
Chair, Ms. Keel, and then Ms. Cunningham.
Ms. Keel?
This is Shannon Keel. Would this be the time to just ask for a clarification question on an item that was, that we had talked about in today's meeting?
Leave that to the lawyers, but I think it's already probably been cited.
Yeah, this is Ben Kennedy, for the record. This is really more items that we want to see on future meetings, but This is really more items that we want to see on future meetings, but I'm happy to, excuse me, connect with you offline, Shannon, and answer any question you have.
Anybody else? Okay. See no more. We'll move on to comments from the public. Do we have any public comment, Madam Clerk?
Thank you, Vice Chair. We have one public comment that will be read into the records, but other than that, no.
Okay.
I'm sorry, will not be read into the records, will be added to the meeting minutes for the next meeting.
Okay, perfect. With that, without objection, we are adjourned. Thank you, everybody.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Everybody's face comes up.[1757.38]